... The consented generally assisting events in the meeting held in February. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any more discussion?
Yes, what was the total of those invoices? Is that what I'm seeing in the financial report?
Um, you have.
Mary?
Can you answer Donnie's question?
I didn't hear Donnie's question.
What was the total on these purchase orders?
Um, do you have your cover sheets? They were in your box.
Okay, it's not the same as this?
Yeah, okay, you want, okay, first of all, these are future purchase orders, not past purchase orders.
This is approved in the minutes.
Okay, approved in the minute.
So both, please.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Item number three, general fund purchase orders and street and alley purchase orders, that's probably where you're.
That's where I'm at.
Now, did Mary answer your question?
No.
Mary, can I ask that question again? Sorry, now we're running.
Those are future purchase orders that have not been paid. You're looking at financial segments that have already been.
Okay, that's been paid. How much have these totaled up to altogether?
You have the reports in your box as well.
Okay, so, this one's seventeen.
Right, but remember there were two sets because I had several that were pending. So here's another set. Did you give them both of those, Donna?
I have both of them.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, do we have enough money? Is there enough money in the account to pay these?
No, there's not enough money in the account right now to pay those.
Right, that's my question.
Okay.
And by law, we can't commit ourselves to pay something when we don't have money in the account to pay it, can we?
What? I'm sorry.
If we don't have enough money in the account to pay the bills, we cannot approve paying all the bills if there's not money there to pay them.
I guess if you want to go through and approve them individually, you can.
But how do you do that legally when you don't have enough money in the account?
You can go through individually and cover the ones that you can cover in the account if you want to do that. If you don't want to do a mass approval.
We can't legally do a mass approval, can we?
Yeah, we do it individually.
Well, I think you can, if you're okay. I mean, as long as whenever the time comes to make the payment, that the money is there.
Okay, but you can't, if it's not there, you're in trouble. We're assuming it'll be there.
Well, then you're going to send the bill in or the check in.
I would agree, but I mean, there are purchase orders that have to be paid.
Right, I agree.
So I mean.
So how do we, by law, we cannot encumber debt if there's not money there to pay it?
This is more of a question I think you probably want to ask the CPA because this falls more in the financial side of it. I think you're okay from a legal standpoint in going ahead and okaying the payment of them, but I would not pay them unless you have the money in the account. But I think that's more of an accounting question than not a legal question. And it's okay, it's okay to go ahead and approve paying them, but if the clerk doesn't have the funds available to make the payments, then she will not, doesn't need to make the payments.
So we can approve it, but she can't pay it if there's no money?
Right, which she's not going to do anyway.
Okay, because when I look at this, under Title 11, seventeen to eleven, it says, "No expenditure or encumbrance may be authorized or made by any officer or employee which exceeds the fund balance for any fund."
Right, but you still, you still need to make sure you take care of the purchasing.
Right, but if there's no money there to take care of it.
But we've already made the purchases.
Well, that's what we've, we can't legally make a purchase without approving it.
You can't.
Well, I mean, there's a final. Yeah, with a PO number, but if there's no money there and we get to June, we can't carry it over into next year either.
Okay.
So we're breaking the law when we do that.
No, I disagree with that. That, I think, I think you're missing a step. And again, I think this is more of a question, if you're concerned about whether or not our accounting practices are not correct, I think this is one where you call the CPA that handles our audits for the town and ask, "This is what the situation is. Are we in trouble from a financial standpoint?"
But we haven't been audited in five years.
No.
Yeah.
When was we last audited? Two thousand nine was our last audit.
He didn't say, "Well, the last time you were audited, Donnie," he said, "Call him and ask him a question."
What I'm saying though is we haven't been audited.
Okay, well, I thought we'd been audited.
No.
We have been audited, but the years that they audited us was from years in the past. We're not up to date.
We're way behind.
But we have, we have been audited within the last year.
Is it, is it a complete audit for what year?
Yes.
From what year?
Um, I'm not sure what year it was. We'll have to pull it up and see.
That's what I've asked for in two thousand nine is the last one I can find.
It's not current.
I'm trying, I'm asking a question, I'm trying to get some clarification here to make sure that I can legally vote yes or no because the law says if I vote for it, we don't have the money to pay for it.
Well, our city attorney's opinion is yes, you can. If you want to get a second opinion, you can't.
I'm telling you that this is the way that it's generally speaking. But again, this is more of, this falls more on the financial side of things than it does in the legal side of things. What I'm going to tell you is I don't know if the clerk wrote the check or what we can't cover.
Right.
But as long as we have the money, then, you know, go ahead and write the checks to cover. And we have to approve.
And who's going to, who's going to determine which bills gets paid then?
I would assume that that would be the clerk's job.
Okay, so that takes, that takes our, that takes our responsibility away from us in determining what gets paid?
I think everything that we buy needs to get paid. If we had made that purchase, why would we sit in this and decide what get paid?
Well, my point is, is we're going in the hole every month.
We're buying this and then selling this stuff and good.
So we've got to figure out, if you keep doing that, you're not going to have enough money at the end of fiscal year, and then what do you do?
Well, if there, if there are purchases that need to be approved, they need to be filed before the board.
Right.
I agree with that. But I mean, I'm unaware of a situation where we've been writing hot checks.
Well, it's not necessarily hot checks, we just have been paying other bills in order to pay other ones.
Well, if you want to get with the supervisors before they get a PO, then maybe that's what you want.
Jackie, that's not what I'm actually referring to. We didn't pay our insurance payments for how many months paying other bills and then we were behind on our insurance. We're still behind on our insurance. So my point is, at one point, we have to get caught up or we're breaking the law.
I'm making a motion to approve these purchase orders. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any more discussion?
Well, we've got executive session for it.
Both.
No.
Yes.
Donnie?
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Item number four, public forum, anyone here for the public forum?
Uh, I guess I am.
Sure. Could you please stand when you speak, please, so we can hear you?
I'm sorry.
Can you please stand up so we can hear you?
My name is LaHomer Robeck, because if you don't know who I am, and what I represent routinely is a self-reclaimed animal advocate for the city of Tallahena. And we have our animal control advisory committee meetings, which the city has granted us the sanction to conduct every last Wednesday of the month. Ms. Gregson had attended one of our meetings and has been unable to attend since. And Donnie has attended one of our meetings, and we have about four people that are regular members of the group, although not that many have been attending. But what we're working on now is a animal control ordinance, a proposed thing for people to look over just as points of discussion. And also, just trying to find some way to address in this interim before we get a replacement for our animal control officer, some kind of mechanism of dealing with more severe cases of abuse in this town. Now, it's my understanding, unless I'm corrected, that the police have the authority to investigate actual animal cruelty. And that's fairly specific in our state statutes. We don't need an animal control officer for that. And we will be making reports to your police and hoping that we have the support to address those specific issues to go and talk to the people. And we recognize also that the ones who are the worst about taking care of their dogs are people who have problems. And by problems, I mean, they're not able to think because of either substance abuse issues or some modified organic neurological problems. And those are some of our worst cases. So that's why we need the support of the police to address these issues. It's not just people just don't care, they're just not capable of doing it. So we can use your support for those. And also, for, just as a aside, this is, I'll make this very brief. We would like, as citizens of this meeting, we're confused about the process, and I'm going to say we, there's three or more of us that have discussed this. When you go into your meetings, I'm assuming now you're talking, you're outlining the motions that you're going to be addressing in your administrative meeting?
No, ma'am.
Okay, what gets discussed back there?
When we get to the executive session, we will tell you that before we go into that session. That's actually on the agenda, it reads on the agenda what we discuss.
Okay.
And that's the only thing we discuss in executive session.
Okay, so when you have that discussion, we'll be getting a summation then of kind of what the discussion is when you come back?
Yes.
And then we'll know what's in the way.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have for the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else there for the public forum?
I am.
Yes, ma'am.
Along the same line. She's right, we have a problem with dogs.
Can you say, tell us, tell everyone who you are, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Ladona Popolo, for the record. I recently bought a house in Tallahena. Today I was charged by some type of bulldog, not a bull, what was it?
Tibble?
Not a pit bull. But it's my neighbor's dog, it got out of the yard. I was in fear for my life. I was out in the corner of my yard, cornered in my yard by my neighbor's dog, and the neighbor was gone. I called the police department, Jack came out. The dog went back in his yard and stayed there. But when Jack arrived, went into that person's driveway, it was very aggressive towards, towards him. And he didn't speak to anyone the first time. So he left, I was going about my business in my house. My mother, who was elderly, came to my driveway. The dog started barking about that time that people came home. I ran out, begged my mother to stay in the car until I could make sure this dog was contained. I don't want to live that way.
Did you, did you actually, correct me if I'm wrong Gina, but does she not need to file a complaint, a written complaint?
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, I'm asking now if that's, if someone can help me out.
So who do I file that with?
You had the police department actually file a written complaint.
Okay.
And then, am I right?
I believe Jack wrote this guy a citation.
Did you write in the citation for that?
Yeah, I didn't discuss anything else with Jack.
Am I wrong by saying she needs to file a written complaint concerning that?
Well, she didn't have to, well, nothing at all.
Okay, okay, well, I'm sorry, I was wrong with that.
All right.
So he was issuing the citation, and he will appear before the judge. I definitely understand what you're talking about, and we do need to get a grasp on that.
Right, I mean, I just bought the house a couple of weeks ago. My mother comes there, I'm working in the yard, I, I.
You should not have to.
And what is your address?
It's 303 Roberts.
And what about the other dogs?
Yeah, and in addition to that, because I did discuss this with Donna earlier, I chased four stray dogs out of my yard today. One was a pregnant mama running around in my backyard. I opened the window, I had the window open, chased her out. Two more little brown dogs came in one gate, and I ran out and yelled at them, and they went out the other. And then another little brown dog was headed in my yard, and I chased him out. I have a fence. I have gates that I keep open so I can go in and out of my yard. If I owned a dog, I would take every effort to maintain that that dog is, is either in fenced area, tied up in my yard, in my house. And, and, you know, this dog, this dog was not a, you know, run across the road, wag its tail, oh, hi, you got a snack for me dog. This dog meant business.
Well, we're praying tonight that maybe we will be able to hire someone that will help us get a grip on that.
That would be great, because if there was someone else I could call.
And it's definitely a big concern.
I mean, Jack did his job, but if there was someone who was a subject to a particular job.
Right, and no telling what might could happen before someone can get there. And we don't want that situation.
Exactly, exactly. And I talked with someone again today in the little restaurant there, Bell's. He was telling about his wife being attacked by a dog while she was walking down the street up in the same Meadow Heights area. Two weeks ago, when it was snowing outside, I couldn't wa, I couldn't drive down the street, there was a dog in heat, and there was fifteen dogs in the middle of the road for a week, for a week. I mean, I couldn't go outside without driving around dogs.
Well, I'm really glad you came to the meeting tonight and brought to the council's attention what a big issue we have going on.
And that's just one street in the town, one street.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming and letting us know that.
Just miss a little brown dog that pees on my tire, easy murder every time I get gas.
Well, thank you very much, and hopefully that will never happen to you again. We needed everything we can to try to keep that from happening. Anyone else for the public forum?
Can I ask one thing on that?
Yeah.
Jack, since that dog was aggressive, was the owners made aware now that that would be classified as an aggressive dog and it would have more security?
Well, the dog, normally, he keeps, he said he keeps it on track. I don't know what it was to a loose today, but he had it in a fence.
It is in a fence.
And he told me that he was going to put it back in the fence and secure that so that it wouldn't be getting out again.
Padlock the fence or something so that dog cannot get out.
It always helps to, you know, lock it.
Our ordinance has a specific size of fencing things on there for an aggressive dog.
Yeah, he's got, it's about a four foot fence or maybe a five foot, and he's got it before the yard. And he said he was going to shut them, he was going to shut the main gate, and I invited him, you know, we come up again, it's going to be the same thing. So, you know, he said he shut the main gate.
Who deemed that an aggressive dog? Does the police, does the judge?
The ordinance has it in there if a dog is attacking.
If it's trying to attack.
Yes, that's how the ordinance is written. The dog is a dangerous dog.
Very specific on what constitutes a dangerous dog. You have to do more than just scare somebody, which, you know, I agree, that, you know, nobody should have to deal with that.
Right.
But we need to look at how it's written, because dangerous dogs, there's a lot of criteria in there about what, that have to be met before you can designate a dog.
She felt like she was ready to be bitten.
Right.
That's an aggressive dog.
And she couldn't get out of the corner of her fence.
Yeah, the ordinance is very, maybe we need to look at rewording some of those ordinances. But thank you so very much.
And chained dogs are the ones that are likely, likely to be most aggressive. An unhyder, a male chained dog will be mean every time it's been chained up for a long time.
Well, I will say, they do have it normally inside a closed security.
But you don't want to go out every day wondering if someone's.
And it reminds me of the every time I walk out in my yard, I hear it, he's right across the street. But I didn't know that he was loose until I was too far in my house for safety.
That's scary. Anybody else got questions? Rhonda, you got more questions?
No, no.
Okay, any more for public forum? Okay, attorney's report, Sean, do you have anything for us?
Everything I have is going to be hit on some aspect of your agenda tonight.
Item number six, financial report. Anybody got any questions for Mary on financial report? Or Mary, do you have anything for us?
I do. The following information is for the month of February two thousand and fourteen for the town talent and development. Revenues totaled fifty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars eighty cents. Expenditures totaled fifty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-six cents, or a shortfall of one thousand, one hundred two dollars fifty-six cents. One noteworthy item, a couple of noteworthy items I wanted to point out to all that were a little bit out of the ordinary on the subject page, under continued expenditures. You'll see about halfway down the line item of fire maintenance. That one thousand twenty dollars actually represents the annual contribution that we make to our volunteer firefighters pension. And then also, the second to the last number on the expenditures, you'll see that crazy number with swimming pool water. Remember last month, we talked about some outstanding bills that Liddell and I were getting cleaned up? That's just one of those old ones, it's money that stays within the company, just getting that one cleaned up. And that's really all I had to share with you out of the ordinary. Are there any questions?
We only became a thousand dollars in the red because you were able to transfer money from Public Works, right?
Right, that's exactly right. The six thousand dollars, which is the last line item on revenues, represents operating transfers from Public Works. And remember also that because we are on a modified cash basis of accounting, this simply represents cash in and cash out. In other words, if there are unpaid bills at the end of the month, because we're not on accrual basis, they're not reflected in the bottom line of this.
Okay.
So, go ahead, no, go ahead.
When we were having our discussion, there was a larger amount that you were telling me that we were short each month.
That's right, and that's exactly the difference in the cash and accrual basis.
But we were talking a lot more than a thousand dollars.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's my point.
Absolutely.
So what is not covered that we're still showing it?
What's not covered in this particular report would be the payroll taxes, both current and past. And the reason it's not covered, because we are required to be cash basis, since that cash didn't actually leave the company, it's not reflected on the report.
So how much is our monthly payroll taxes?
Well, I'm going to speak for both companies combined, okay? It's just shy of twenty thousand dollars. And so we have that on a monthly basis.
Monthly basis.
And in addition to that, we also have a multitude of past due amounts for which we don't have the funds to pay right now.
So every month, we have to pay twenty thousand dollars in that social security, Medicare, that's what we're talking?
Right, it's actually, some of it is an expense, and some of it is money that we hold out of the employee's check and we're meant on their behalf. Some of it represents our portion of the payroll tax expense, but yes, they are the type of expenditures that you're mentioning.
Okay, so if we took that twenty thousand each month that you cannot make, plus this one thousand odd, and then the next one is going to be that little four thousand.
Plus Public Works.
So we're about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Actually, Rhonda, when I gave you that number of twenty thousand dollars, that was all in custody, okay? So it's not in addition to these. And, you know, it's also a little hard, because we haven't had what we call a regular month yet, in the sense that occasionally I'm still getting hit with some old bills that I'm trying to keep people at bay, and then also the fact that we have made some radical changes in the collection procedures in the utility office. So we have seen some increases in collections. But based on the best data that I have available at my fingertips as of today, that was a number I felt comfortable giving to you with a little bit of cushion built in.
Okay.
Okay?
And my other question to you is if we cannot pay the entire payroll taxes, we should at least be paying what is taken out of the employee's check?
Okay, if that's how you want to direct me to pay?
That's how I feel.
Okay, okay.
We discussed that with everybody.
And that's fine, if that's how y'all want to direct me to pay the bills. Keep in mind that if we do that, there will be other expenses that we are not paying. Okay, so it'll be up to you guys to pick and choose if we're not going to pay utilities, chemical, garbage pickup, those are the type of expenses that I'm paying.
But it is against the law not to pay it.
Absolutely, it's against the law not to pay it.
Don't we have one penalty that we paid, a twenty thousand dollar penalty to IRS that we've already paid?
Not to my knowledge, I haven't cut a check for twenty thousand dollars.
Do we not have another, do we have a penalty assessed to us right now that we're trying to pay?
Right, that I have requested abatement of, and I haven't gotten a decision on that yet.
And it's how much?
Um, I'd have to pull the numbers, Donnie, I'm just not.
But it's, it's above twenty thousand, is it not?
Hmm, the penalty part, I don't think is above twenty thousand, but it probably wouldn't be that far off.
Okay.
And that's actually what's interesting about that penalty, is that penalty is not based on any failure to pay taxes, it's based on failure to file reports and then willfully ignoring repeated notices that were addressed to the clerk treasurer. So when I implored the IRS to give us a reprieve from those penalties, I based it on the fact that the council was unaware. The council was not ignoring the notices, the clerk treasurer was not ignoring the notices, in many cases not opening the mail. And so I implored them on that basis. Now, the problem I have with the IRS in terms of civil penalty abatement, usually in my career, that would be kind of a slammed up thing, especially because, because we are a municipality. Because this municipality has a history of non-payment, then they are much more reluctant to work with me and cooperate as I've been able to with previous entities.
And the penalty is over, above and beyond what you actually owe. The penalty is a, is tacked on to what you're owed, what your taxes are owed.
Yes.
So it could very well be twenty thousand dollars. How much do we owe them?
Do you want me to answer questions from the public, or do you want to recognize them?
I think that, do you know what that amount is that we owe them?
I don't have, I just want to, I just want to make sure I understand the procedure. I don't have that, I'm not trying to avoid the question, I just want to make sure if I'm supposed to take questions from them or asked or directed by you. I don't have that exact number in my fingertips right now. I have, for example, with state unemployment reports that haven't been filed literally in years, with payroll data that I've been forced to recreate because the records, both on the computer and paper, were incomplete. And so every month, between the normal daily duties that I'm working on, but that doesn't matter to you, Frances, in other words, I don't have a total amount, no I don't.
For the sake of time, if you want to just get with her about that matter, she'd like to answer those questions.
Absolutely. I'm up to date on my reports with the IRS, but not on my tax payments.
Okay, anything else for us?
This swimming pool water, is that a final payment, we're through with that?
Well, it's, it's an.
I mean, we're up to date.
Yes.
We don't owe any more on that.
I mean, according to what was presented to me by the utility clerk, no we don't. We'll start running water there again, that's money that stays within the company.
Let me ask you a quick question on that. Since that's payment to ourselves, why can't we put that one aside and pay something more important right now?
Well, I don't think you're understanding how it works, Donnie, because when I pay that, I turn right around and transfer it out.
Transfer back, that's what I'm saying, it just.
So I can just ignore the bill, or I can clean it up all the books.
It helps keep the records, yeah.
So she has it prepared for the audit.
Yeah, I'm just cleaning it up all the books.
But my point is, on that one, we can delay it easier than we can delay payroll taxes.
You're not understanding what I'm saying, Donnie, that money doesn't leave the company. I pay it to Public Works, and Public Works turns right around as an operating transfer, it puts it back with the general fund. It doesn't leave the company, so it's not going to allow me to pay another one or not to pay another one. It's inter-fund transfers.
Thanks, Mary.
You bet.
I'd like to bring it to the council's opinion too, that all your supervisors are here, which you requested.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that you've probably gone over the reports, it's not on the agenda to ask them any questions about the reports. I think we should probably do that in the future, because we haven't had it on there before.
I appreciate everybody coming.
They are here, you might come up with a question for them later.
Jackie, Jackie, can I ask a favor?
Sure.
Can we move number twenty up right now, since these ladies are from Podo and would like to get home?
Number twenty, I don't have another number.
Or not number 20, number, um, where is it?
Discussion actually.
Yeah, number 20, yeah.
I was fixing to say, there wasn't, I'm sorry, only one number.
That's alright. And also, after that, could we move, I believe, 12 up to discuss it, since Cal's here? Because we wait till that, we're going to be pretty late.
It's up to the council, the council likes to do.
Let's go for number 20 right now.
For number 20, okay.
We'll go.
Lucky winner, number 20.
Okay, well, we came last month, and we talked to the city council about proposing a passing of a youth access ordinance onto tobacco sales in the city of Tallahassee. And I think we kind of, oh, did a preliminary yes and approval for it, but we were just coming back to make sure if there were any questions or any concerns that you had, that we could answer.
I have no questions.
This was the one on where we said there's an ordinance against it, so if a establishment is selling tobacco, the city receives the fine and not the state.
Correct.
Correct.
And there was another deal to that, wasn't there?
That's not totally correct.
Okay, do you enlighten us now?
We get 35% of.
35%.
We don't get the, we have to pay some of that for the state.
That is when it is just governed by the state.
We can't, we can't increase the fees or, my reading of the state statute, basically says, we don't need to do this. I mean, that's the bottom line. The state law's already out there.
Well, the state, I'm sorry, the state law is out there for a youth access ordinance, which is state law. This is a local ordinance that is mirroring state law, but it's on a local level. There are multiple, there are multiple communities within Oklahoma that do it, and they do receive 100% of the tickets that are fined in the city. Also, I talked with Joe Daniels from the ABLE Commission. And if the ABLE Commission comes in and does reward reminder visits that we talked about, um, then they, when they come in and put their penalty upon, which is 500 dollars, and it can either be toward the business, the person who's selling, or the person who's purchasing, more, more, more likely it is from the business and the person who is selling. But when they receive that fine, those fines from the ABLE Commission, then actually will be returned back to the city as well. Now, I'm not 100% sure if it's all of it, or if it's a portion of it, because they have to also, from the ABLE Commission.
We have fines for both of those in the town of Tallahassee now. We may not have been enforcing them, but we have those fines that now that we can enforce, and we get 100% of it.
But that's our fines, that's not part of the fine if we're making.
Right, this is our fines.
Right, this is, I guess, that I'm unaware of.
This is our fines.
What I was forwarded was this, this proposed ordinance, which I then went and compared with the state statute. And there are portions of the ordinance that things are missing, that the state statute has, that if you're going to adopt ordinance, I'd also bring in the signed requirement, the notice, and the nullification by the employee's requirement. But candidly, that's already all there through the state statute, and the police department's going to enforce the state statute. And there's still a requirement, even in this ordinance, of reporting to the ABLE Commission what's going on. And my reading of the statute is that, that we only get 35% of the fine.
On the, on the one that is on the state level.
But the, the state statute also says we cannot do anything in addition to.
You're not doing it in addition to. That's what we would talk about when we're talking about preemption, when we're talking about that the city can supersede. We can't do that, and we know that. This is something that, this was approved by the Oklahoma City Municipal, or the State of Oklahoma Municipal League, by all of the city councils. They get together, their attorneys get together. It's all, when I present, on the up and up, there's not anything that, you know, they're trying to be misleading about. That is everything that the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust has told us. And there are many, many communities within the state that use this.
Would it make you feel better, instead of doing an up and down the table this and get some clarification?
Yeah, what I was about to suggest is, if you guys could get me whatever documentation you have that says that we would get 100% of the fine, I think I'd be more in favor for it, because where we're at right now, we still have to do all the, all the compliance parts, and so I don't see the benefit of having a state, a city ordinance, when I've got a state statute out there that also covers it. So if you've got something that directs the ABLE Commission to then give back more than what they're taking on the fine, in other words, if they're going to give back, if we, if we adopt an ordinance and they're going to give back 20% of the fine, if you guys have got something like that, then it becomes beneficial for us to do that, because now we're getting more than what we would be getting before.
Right, and that is the whole purpose of this, is that the cities are then going to be able to benefit from fines. The 100 dollars for the first payment, 200 for the second, 300 for the third.
But what I'm saying is, is that the, the last statute, the last part of the statute, that's what talks about the fine, and there's nothing that it says that if the city adopts an ordinance, that they get 100% of the fine. It still says that only 35% of the fine. So if you have, if you have an ABLE Commission regulation, or if you've got some sort of letter from the ABLE Commission that says if the city adopts an ordinance, then they can get 100% of the fine, then I would recommend, yeah, let's go ahead and adopt an ordinance, because then we're getting, we're getting 100 dollars instead of 35 on me. So.
And that was the whole purpose of, of.
Now, we get our, our fines for a minor possession is 177 dollars. Our fine for a retailer selling is 215 dollars, which is more than what you're talking about, that the state has.
But that's when our officer goes out and does it, but this is, this is ABLE deal.
Right.
So.
No, 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 if you adopt an ordinance, it's still the officers enforcing the ordinance.
It's still the officers.
And he's still also enforcing the state statute.
But didn't you say that they do come in and do some courtesy checks and stuff?
ABLE Commission will come in and do reward reminder visits if they know that the youth access ordinance is on a local level. Well, they do them regardless. But if they are aware, and they have the documentation, that the city of Tallahassee has a local youth access ordinance in place, they then do give money back to the city for those.
And plus, it allows us to apply for grants to use on help.
And that was what we also talked about, you know, you know, the baby steps of being certified healthy.
And don't use this or replace it.
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we table this.
We are, we are, we approve it last month. I think what needs to happen is you and Sean.
Well, that's what I'm saying, table it and get the information to.
We just haven't signed it yet. So it sounds to me like they got a little bit more work to do, but.
Well, that was the reason we came, is because we wanted to know if you had any more.
So we'll do no action.
We appreciate you following up with us, so.
Yeah, no action.
We appreciate you following up with us very much.
Y'all just get the stuff from Belle. Belle can give it to me, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay.
Can we have your email address, and also we can?
Oh, she's got it back here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the number seven. Approve or reject the removal of the tree behind Hooty Creek Hotel? There is a tree behind the hotel there that's actually in the alley. Carolyn and Essex Webb has came and, actually how it all started, they were just inquiring about someone that might could take it down for them. Um, while we started researching that, we realized it was in the middle of the alley. So now it's came back on the city. And we do have an estimate to not remove that tree, but it looks like to cut it back and to haul it off, which is 1,500 dollars. I don't know if you've looked at it or not, but it is leaning, and if there comes a storm, it probably is going to take out part of that hotel, and possibly take a lot. It is a big tree.
But that, that alley's been used for personal use, is it not?
What kind of tree is it?
It's elm tree. It's, it's between my property and their property.
I almost knew that was an alley until just recently.
But it, but it's, it's not an open alley. It's an elm, it's an elm tree. And the reason it's leaning is because it's next to utility pole, and the utility companies cut everything off of one side.
No.
Yes, it is, Jackie.
That's leaning, the roots are up out of the ground.
Uh, if you look at the high line next to it, you can see all the trees limbs cut on one side, because PSO came in and cut all the limbs.
The council just needs to decide if they want to address that. And we tried to get several bids on it.
It says, where's the site behind Surapon?
Yeah, that's where we allow people to dump things in there if it can be burned, if they ask for permission. It has to be stuff that can be burned.
Oh, oh, they're taking I-gots. I thought you were saying that was a supermarket.
No.
They're going to haul it down, but our property.
We did ask for several people to bid that job that had insurance, and that's the only, that's the only bid that we could get returned.
If it causes property damage though, and it falls into somebody else's area, whoever's area it falls in is responsible, responsible for the insurance on it, on the city. I mean, I'm just saying, because I've been in a situation like that.
I think it's been brought to the city's attention, and so we have to address that.
City guys, is there something more beyond what you can handle, if you look at the tree?
It's a big tree.
I beg you, Jerry, would you trim it down, or somebody could cut it down?
It requires somebody that has the insurance. Usually it's someone through the city that wants. I don't know that he could, I don't know.
We couldn't let volunteers trim it. We couldn't let volunteers with certification trim it.
Uh, we never have the pass that's up to the council.
Well, at 1,500 dollars, honestly, we can do anything right now. I think we need to.
You just have to think about if it falls, if it damaged their livelihood, plus possibly kills someone. It's what you need to keep in mind if you.
Well, I'd be willing to work with it, because it borders me too. Of course, it's not going to fall on me, but I'm willing to pay for half of a bucket if Essex and I want to get together and start to trim it. We can do that. But to save the city 1,500 dollars right now when we're going in a hole, I think we need to look at that. So I think maybe if we could table it till next month, and I can talk to Essex and see if we can figure a way to do it.
This was supposed to have been our last month's meeting, and it got missed, so we're all really behind on it.
Jerry trimmed that tree where I could get it down without killing somebody. And he would trim. And he ought to be able to trim that one where we can get it down without spurring out.
Especially since it's technically, part of their problem comes with the utility.
Yeah, it's part of their problem in this form.
Which they are willing to pay part of that.
Part of this?
Yes, but it is on the city's property. It is the city's problem.
But then again, the city property's being used for private use.
You'd have to talk to Sean about that. I don't know the laws on that. And it was just brought to our attention that it's an alley.
I mean.
They didn't bring it to our attention, the city brought it to our attention. Keith brought it to our attention. Keith brought it to our attention it was in the alley. The people at Hooty Creek did not know it was in the alley.
And we're not using?
It's a closed, it's a closed alley.
When was the last time we used the alley?
60 years ago, maybe.
How many?
60.
The park, the park actually goes through the alley. The half, half that park down town is actually city property.
I could make a really strong argument that they, they, whoever's using the alley for private purposes, they've got it through adverse possession, and it's really their land now, not ours. I mean, I could make that argument. I'm not saying that I'd win it, but I, it's definitely one I could, well, I could definitely throw out there. I mean, if we haven't used the thing in 60 years.
If that, so if that tree did fall, and we were sued or something like that, because we didn't address that, because we were asked, are you saying you could win that case because of that?
I never said.
You're just saying you can argue that case. It's not, it's not a cut and dry. Do we have a good case?
You have a defendable case. That's what you're asking me. You have a defendable case if something happens.
What would the council like to do?
No action. I'll talk to Essex and see if we can find a private solution.
What would the council like to do?
I think we need to research it a little bit more, see if we can find another way. I'm also wondering if when the ADP comes by, and the summer, trimming trees, if we think it's part of that.
Let's get a motion on it. Get their gesture motion, so we can move on. And if we do a no motion, then put it back on the agenda later.
We can do, you can do the same thing with just no action, could you not?
Um, we put it on the agenda to approve or reject, so.
Well, we did the other one on there too, and you wanted to table it, so.
So is, are we telling them that?
We're, we're going to research it some more and look at it, and try to figure out the best solution.
So there is no motion? Okay, we'll move on. Out of number seven, no motion.
May I ask a quick related question on trees?
Sure.
When they come by.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
When, when, scared me, I thought my mother was here. When, when they come by, when they come by to cut the trees, you know, and they do that lopsided cut, they'll cut the 70-year-old trees in Shurumah on the side, and that really does jeopardize them. Do we have to give them the authorization to do that? Can we say no?
You can sign a release. I've done this on my own property in Oklahoma. There's one tree that is growing into the area, and I say, trim just the amount you need to clear that line, and that's all. I give you permission to trim. And then allows my family to go and trim the other side to match, so that tree doesn't become lopsided.
Oh, good, okay.
You have to sign the release, and they'll try to tell you you can't, but personally I have done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Out of number eight, approve or reject placing a stop sign at 7th and Roberts?
Where's 7th?
Carol James has called and asked us to be put on the agenda. It's right down from Belle's Kitchen.
We've already got two stop signs on that, don't we?
She said it's just became very dangerous for the people living in the neighborhood. Actually, the lady that just left.
Is 7th and 4th Street?
She, she's right there at that. Yes.
The 7th Church Street?
Roberts and Zell.
No. No, it would be, it would be a block up 7th and 7th Street, from Church Street. It's like a very, very short block even.
Yeah, it's a real short.
And we've got one there at, what is that street? What is that street, Rodney?
We got two of them.
They got two on Roberts already.
Won't it hurt to put another one in?
Well, it's technically kind of a thorough, true street.
What has the police department observed? Speedy? Has there been wrecked at this intersection?
We want to just maybe patrol it a little bit extra for a month or see what happens and.
Can I make a motion to place the.
Just a second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I've seen in the morning, when kids are getting ready to get on the bus, when people are leaving for work, I've seen the kids on, so they run over, because they race from the four-way on, they race from that one four-way towards Belle Kitchen, Belle's Kitchen. And it's like, it's a stray shot, so it does get a lot faster. And in the morning about, between 7:00 and 7:30, it gets really fast through there. So, I mean, I know you can't, I don't, I don't know if you could put a slow during certain hours, you know, because of kids loading and unloading. That might help, you know, because, you know, subtle children's crossing or something.
And we all have stop signs, they're going to stop all right, but it makes love.
I also look at that stop sign. There's part out there to the, to the community.
So what would, what would the police department suggest? That we patrol it more, or more stop signs everywhere?
We have a motion on the floor to put the stop sign, kind of always stop sign at 7th and Roberts. We have a motion.
Would you consider any alternatives, like, like she said, putting a sign to slow down during certain hours or something like that?
I don't think that's going to do any better than a, than a stop. I think that will be less efficient than a stop sign actually.
Why don't the police just monitor that a little bit more, write a few tickets there?
I second, I second that motion. Any more discussion?
I, I haven't.
You're saying, he's saying monitoring?
I'm still waiting on the recommendation of the police department.
Oh, you said that you knew what you were going to do.
It's whatever you order, whatever you order.
So a motion is second.
We just enforce the law.
Donna?
No.
Donna?
No.
Rhonda?
I'm going to say no.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Can you let Carol James know tomorrow if that motion is filled, please?
I will.
Thank you. Out of number nine, discussion action on hybrid wolves and other animals.
We have an issue with hybrid wolves. One in particular. They are legal in the state of Oklahoma. However, if you have one, you don't need a permit, but I believe if you have two, and I have that, you have to have a permit to have the wolf hybrids, wolves or wolf hybrids. Um, we've just been having, we've had in the last few weeks, we've had, um, four calls, three tickets. How many have you written in?
Three.
Three tickets? And he has three breeds.
Yes, and he has three breeds. He has seen having one. Um, I just need to know what to do with the wolves. We, our animal ordinance covers vicious animals, but, um, some cities and counties are doing away with allowing them to have the wolf hybrids, wolves or hybrids in the city limits, or they are limited to like one, and they cannot pick, uh, breed.
May I weigh in on this, since it's my interest area?
Sure.
Um, I think that we, we have to make some determinations about what constitutes a kennel like a breeding kennel, and how that would be subject to the purview of the state on its criteria for a kennel, and see if those things can be met. I, I think that.
Well, the problem is, is the wolves are vicious, and they have attacks, several animals.
I'm totally aware of that.
Right, because they're owners. And my suggestion would be to do outlaw them altogether or to limit them.
Well, I guess I would prefer that as a citizen. I would prefer that, because I've been, I've been complaining about those wolves for quite some time. And, uh, you know, I've just been waiting for them to get on somebody's little kid walking by trying to pet them or something, and they'll tear it up like they did that little dog down the street from me. I'm worried of that also, so.
So who would that permit be? Would that be through the state, and what would it be like?
No, it's through the state, and Jack has called the game wards to try to find out if this man has a.
I called him, I talked to him when I told you I'd get him, and he said that he would check on it and get back with me, but I haven't heard from him yet.
And getting a hold of the game wards is not an easy task these days.
So are we where we can make a motion to amend our animal ordinance and limit the.
Well, in a manner, we need to enforce the vicious animal, and they need to have muzzles, and they need to be in enclosed fences, and that needs to be enforced. But our problem is, we have an issue, and not only that, he is giving them to half the people in Tallahassee. They're everywhere, these wolf hybrids.
We probably, we probably need to get a hold of Wildlife Department, or is wildlife or agriculture, Jack?
It'd be wildlife.
Yeah, and we try to.
It would be game rancher.
Because the kennel falls under agriculture, I thought.
No, we can't.
City ordinance says they need any more than have three dogs specifies it being a kennel. That's why you can only have the three dogs.
Unless they have puppies, and you can have them up to 6 months of age.
So we need to enforce the kennel. We need to do.
The vicious animal policy has got to be enforced.
Right, so we need to try to enforce that.
Yeah, but I do have an issue with wolves.
And if we want time to think about it, that's fine.
Cutting it down to one dog, since you can do that without having a state permit, would be very logical for us to do that.
He's got, the court puts him up on that. I mean, every time he moves, every time he moves, we're sticking to him. I mean, he's got, he's got hip ending right now. I mean, I don't think, nobody realizes what we're dealing with with this guy.
And it's just time after time after time?
He don't care. He'll tell you, I don't care.
Yeah.
I mean, it surprised me the tickets hadn't been mailed back yet already. He don't care.
Is this the guy that doesn't recognize his?
He is.
Yes.
I mean, I started to tell you a week ago.
Well, a wolf is a pack animal. Anything over one creates a pack, and they're very, they can be very vicious. And the city in which I live in, and I wound up finding the guy's house, they invented him from the city and his wolves. And I don't, I don't think it's a minor issue. I think it's a major issue.
I agree.
It's a big issue.
Because every day you go down, and I mean, I like the guy. He, I mean, I talk to him, but he goes down and sells them every weekend. You're not going to have one person, you're going to have many people soon. Right, and that's what I'm saying. He's. Right, and that's what I'm saying. He's already populated the town.
We didn't stand up on this issue.
I just needed, though.
I mean, I was there the other day at 12.
Yeah, he.
I mean, I, I could stand in these people's yard and count 12.
Do we want to make them have these?
Oh, we have to do, do an ordinance, and I have a motion saying that you can.
There's no ordinance now.
You're, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to draft it, but what you're doing is you're saying you want, you want to enact the ordinance. And whatever you wanna say in that, that's what we're gonna go ahead with.
But I'm not for having them at all in the city.
Well, that's, that's a fine line there too, I think, in Oklahoma.
Well, just remember that if we go to court, the state supersedes our ordinances. So they're allowed, Oklahoma allows you to own a wolf, a pure wolf or hybrid according to.
But how are we gonna?
I understand what you're saying.
I don't know. I just am afraid that some child or somebody is gonna get hurt.
And it's, it can happen with any dog.
It can, yes.
And I mean, that's why our vicious animal policy is not pretty specific.
You're enforcing, that's, that's the problem. You're enforcing, if you've got somebody that is, that is not obeying the law.
Right, but what do you do about that?
Then we need outside help.
You, you keep writing the tickets, keep fining him, and when he, when he refuses to do certain things, then you go to the next level.
What is that?
Right, if he refuses to pay the fines and refuses to, uh, appear in court, then a warrant gets issued for his arrest, and we take him over to LaFleur County, and he has to.
Well, that happened, but he never left here because he was bonded out before he left town.
Good, well.
So we're to that one already.
Well, and you keep doing that, and eventually. Eventually you get, you get, you get the court to write the checks to the city of Tallahassee, but Tallahassee for, for this, and he'll, he'll move on.
Yes.
I have one other thing to say.
Sure.
When they, the last person that these wolves mauled was the county sheriff, and they like to eat him up. It will get to a point. It will escalate.
Yes, you're right. You have something?
As far as state and city ordinance are concerned, I think the city is not allowed to underwrite the state law, but it is. It can make it stronger.
Well, yeah, exactly, and that's what several.
Like in a state, you can say.
Yeah, we can do whatever, but no, the state is going to say, anyway. I make a motion to, uh, have an ordinance that allows one wolf or wolf hybrids per household.
No motion. Second. Wait a second. Sean, give us our in- ordinance petition.
Okay.
Vote.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
No.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
So we'll adopt the ordinance and then put it in the paper and then.
Well, we have to, no, we have to see the ordinance first and then adopt it.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll edit that and put it on there.
Item number three, discussion action concerning employee leave request requirements and clarify who approves supervisor's leave.
Um, this just kinda came up within my department, that we were looking at how much time someone had and how much time they had taken. And Philip fills out an employee leave request, and the question was, who approves supervisor's leave?
I thought it was the. Hi. Liddell's considered a supervisor. I know she don't have anybody supervised, but she's in that category, and whoever's in the treasury, and I approve those.
Now, what's happening is.
And in the police department, Jack always approves mine.
And you approve Jack's?
The way we, and I always approve Jack's. I mean, it's one of them deals, if we got time and we can take off, we, we take off. I approve his, he approves mine. We both, whoever, me and me the one approves everybody.
So they hold each other accountable.
Yeah, we hold each other accountable.
And you make sure that that spot is covered.
I mean, it's one of them deals, if, if you, if you ain't got the time, or if you can't take off, you just can't take off.
That's exactly right.
So.
What's been happening is Philip, I guess, asking, so he's been notifying Keith. And Keith knows when Philip is gone, because, you know, he needs to cover when Philip is gone. So, but I just wondered, is that how we wanna do it? The other thing was that Philip has this really nice leave form that he fills out. What kind of leave, how many? Okay, when I was looking through all the payroll, he was, Philip was the only one that had them under those timesheets. So I didn't know everybody does or not. My file.
We all, they.
We all have the same employee leave request form. Okay, I made on my computer.
Police department, do you, do you want that to be done differently, or are you just adding questions?
I just wanted to ask if that was the way it was done.
I'm really not sure who would be any better for it than, um, unless it was, uh.
I just combined, I get her counter. Clarifying, that's what I wanted to clarify.
So you're gonna change it, or are you good with it for now? Good, okay. All right. Item number 11, discussion action on mobile home permit for Anna Alexander. Is Anna Alexander here? Anna, can you just tell us a little bit about, um, 1201 11th Street?
Yeah, it's either, uh, it's on the corner of Ishwood and 11th. And it's, uh, my brother's line, he's dead, and I have a piece of paper here that's, uh, that says that I can take care of it, and I'm the homeowner.
There's no mobile home there now?
No, it's two houses, two houses.
There's two houses.
But I'm gonna push one house down because I've got a problem with bedbugs, and I can't hear them. I'm pushing one of them down.
I'm sorry, who would your brother make to help us understand where the?
Ken's old. He's dead, five years. But I take care of it, and I pay the taxes and take.
He had a property outside of town also, then. Okay, I know who you're talking about.
And I'm fixing to sell my, mine out, and I'll be able to move the trailer over here into Tallahassee.
And you read the ordinance, and, and you're willing to be in compliance with that, such as wood weight faces and underpinning and. And your lots are the, are bigger than the specified size.
Uh, my lot is 94 by 50.
It says, what does that aggregate say on there?
Um, 1201 11th.
It's on the, it's on the corner of 11th and Ishwood. I guess I don't read much on the statute.
Donnie, is that what the piece of property she's talking about?
Uh, I, I think I am. You'd, you'd have to remove the house first.
I'd have to remove the house, you want to put a trailer there?
I, I think so, because it'd be crowding it, I think. I'd have to, I'd have to actually look. Well, I'd have to see what it looks like.
It would be behind your brother's house, the one that he was living in?
But you were gonna tear one of them down, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna tear the small one down.
But you have to have someplace to live while you're tearing.
Well, I have a house.
Oh, you're leaving, okay.
She's leaving one house up.
Okay.
She's gotta put the trailer behind it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so is the lots, uh.
The smaller houses, right.
50 by 94, all of them together, or just the one you're gonna put?
No, no, that's just the one that I'm gonna move on to.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is, is this the piece of property that a mobile home is not allowed on at this time?
Well, they're not allowed in the city limits at all without a permit, and she's trying to obtain a permit. And it can be placed on a piece of property that's a certain size, as long as she complies with the ordinance, if she gets the permit, okay. There's not a piece of property in town that doesn't allow one unless it's not big enough, a big enough piece of property.
That doesn't allow. You're saying they are allowed if all.
They are allowed as long as it's, you get a permit and follow all the, everything on the ordinance.
The reason I'm saying that is because mobile homes have a tendency to depreciate the property.
Right, right.
I didn't know that.
I think the mobile home permits, correct me if I'm wrong, I think those permits can be just for a certain period of time, and then remissed.
It says 201 11th Street?
It says 1201.
It's 201.
It says 1201.
It's 201 11th.
So is this the property, Anna, we're talking about?
Is that the same property?
No, I don't think so.
That's right on the corner, it's a white house with a chain link fence. We've sent numerous letters trying to get the yard cleared up. Is that the same one?
Uh, you would have sent them to me, and no, I had a letter about three years ago. I think it was up doing it three years ago. Uh.
Who's that letter going to?
It went to Victoria Caldwell, Caldwell was a rancher, and we found out that they were just a renter. Oh, yeah, she was a renter.
She is. She was a renter, so that's the right property?
I guess, it looks weird here, but.
It's from that side, it's from that side yard, that's why this property.
Yeah, it's very familiar to me. I guess it is then.
So is that the house you're gonna tear down, or were you in reference to this house?
There is a small one. Is this the big one or the little one?
That's the big one that she was living in.
No, there's one sitting right here that I'm gonna tear down. I mean, I'm gonna tear it down tomorrow, but it's gonna be a while.
Uh-huh.
Because it's got bedbugs in it. The people that are living in it are moving out.
So is there a diagram to show me where exactly where that's gonna go?
Let me see it.
Yeah, there's probably a diagram.
We don't ask for that. Just trying to get clear on that. This is the, the mobile home now?
Is it that one or a new one?
I don't know. I think they have to be torn down first.
Because I don't, that's a three bed or two bed.
Is this one you're looking at buying?
No, that's one I live in now.
And this is located in Alvin now? Okay, you do know that if, if you don't put this particular trailer on there, you have to get a new permit. Because we're, we're okaying the permit for this mobile home, and, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, you are. Even if I get a new one?
Yes, all of them have to have a permit.
So I have to come to you all as well, again?
If you don't. I mean, it won't be a big, it won't be a big deal.
I mean, we can wait a month and then.
It won't be a big deal.
Remind us which one you want.
But you will have to.
Pay the $35 if you go, we all want to get it?
No.
No, she wouldn't pay $35, I'm embarrassed.
I don't think we'll make you charge you $35, but we do have to have the mobile home.
Well, see, I was trying to.
We can't give you the okay with an assumption that's what you're gonna come there.
I have one picked out, and I was trying to get pictures of it, but I just finished trying to do it about last Friday, and I didn't do it, so I thought, well, I'll take a picture. Doesn't, can I maybe move this one? I don't know, it's a little bit big.
Well, we need size, we can, uh, put it back on the agenda, or we can.
You'll be allowed so much time once we okay it to, to do the things that are required on the ordinance.
Yes, okay.
And as long as you do the things that are required on the ordinance, once it's okay, you shouldn't have a problem.
Okay.
And the council is something that you.
I'd like to actually see the lot, and, and see if the house needs to be tore down first before you put the trailer in.
The, the house is in front of the, here's the lot right back here, and the house is way up here, and then there's another house here. But the, the lot is way back there.
It can't actually go on that lot if it's not big enough with that house on there, until it's, you know, if she has a house on there, things can be.
Oh, it's, it's way there, it's way up there.
It's way, it's way. Oh, yeah. The, the lot, by sign, the house is this one, 90?
It's 90, uh.
50 by 94.
Yeah, 50 by 94.
How soon are you wanting to?
I haven't installed my site yet. Uh, I haven't even got all the way packed yet. It'll probably be another month or two.
So you get us something on the mobile home you want to place on that lot?
Well, I may move this one out.
Well, when you decide for sure.
Can we tell you?
Just let us know. It'll still, I mean, it's important when you let us know when that permit gets okay. But I think the council will entertain that permit, okaying that permit if everything's good.
Okay, so I'll, can I all come back to one of these meetings?
Well, you just need to get it, whatever you need on the mobile home and get it to Liddell.
When, when you decide what you're gonna do, for sure, you just can tell me, and then I'll get what I'm gonna commission her to get you back on the agenda.
Okay, I have to go with you all, so yeah?
Well.
Actually, unless we have questions or something for you, if you've came to the meeting and stuff.
Well, Donnie can walk and look at it. It's huge.
You just deal with Liddell, and we'll get the information.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. No, I have no action on item 11. Item number 12, discussion action on easement for Mr. C. McLean and Mrs. Williams.
The, uh, surveys, I don't know if you guys have copies of these in our code. Um, the surveys were done, and I just talked with Mr. McLean. The easement number two is the easement that would go to his property, ingress and egress easement for him. And easement number one is the one that would go to Ms. Williams' property. And, uh, the, uh, legal description is out there. On the copy I got, it's very, very small. Uh, I've got a bigger copy, if you guys have a small copy. I just realized.
Got it too.
It's still hard to read, but that, that's essentially what it is. And what we would be doing is, we would be giving Mr. McLean an easement for traveling on that road, uh, from the point it starts to his property, and we'd be giving Ms. Williams an easement, uh, traveling on the road that starts there and goes to her property. There's a little overlap. Yeah, yeah, just, just.
You don't need to give any, but I've got them.
I know, but I think, I think in order to, to make it clearer and more consistent, I think we would need to, uh, adopt an easement that is, is specific with.
I've got an easement, and I've got a survey of that easement, so I, I, you don't need to give me.
Okay, but if you don't want one, that's fine. If the council doesn't wanna give you one, if the council decides they don't wanna give you one, it's, it's not my decision, it's theirs. Uh, but.
I'm just saying, I've got.
Mr. Hackler, who represents, uh, Ms. Williams' interest, did send over an easement for ingress and egress, and I have compared it with the survey that we have, and it is consistent. And this would give her the access to her property, and all we would need to do is vote.
Okay, uh, is it flagged right now?
Flag?
Yeah, I mean, it's a survey flag, where we can go out physically and look at it.
But it's got it in the survey, so I don't know if it is.
I have no idea. They did the survey, they'll think the last.
Well, how are we gonna prove something when we don't know where this is?
It's got a legal description.
I, I know that, but where is that on the property?
It's the legal description.
Okay, am I, am I not a surveyor, Sean? So I'm gonna look at the survey and go out there, this piece of property, and say, oh, this road's gonna run here.
We have, we have it written down because the.
My, my point is, is it flagged to show us where this survey is?
I, I don't know, I haven't.
It's a road.
Cal, is there any flags up there showing where the surveying has been?
There's a flag leading, exiting my roadway.
A new one?
Where that road is at.
Okay, a new one?
A new flag.
Is it something new that has just been placed there? Okay.
Does, does it travel?
It's been placed here since the survey.
And, and it runs into the flood plain of the city, of the lake. But my, my point is, is it goes right where we don't want a public road.
We're not running a public road.
Well, if he has access to it, anybody going up to that, her house can go up there, and she can invite anybody she wants to to go across city property. Uh, we have problems down there right now with trash and everything else. Uh, but we need to see exactly where this road is before I'm gonna say, yeah, she can take that road.
She's not taking the road.
She's, she's gonna build a new road.
Drive on the road.
Isn't this what you've all been doing?
I think Sean just did what we asked him to.
What I'm saying is, who told the surveyor where to mark the access, the easement?
Well, I guess they were.
Okay, and you told them to take the road that's there right now?
I told them to survey the road that is there now for an easement.
It's a pig trail. I wouldn't say it was a road, would you, Cal?
I'm talking.
Well, I'm.
Easement for Mr. McLean and an easement for Mrs. Williams.
And, and so, did you tell the surveyor to flag it so we could see exactly where it is?
I'll tell her it's flag.
Hmm?
Yes, it's flag.
Okay, so.
And I'm just jabbing with my.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Just a second. Sean, do you think there's a question with the survey? I mean, did you have anything to do with where they surveyed or anything?
No.
All you did was took the opinion and went with that?
Jeff, Jeff called my office a week or so ago, asked me some questions about what the situation was. I explained to him the entire history of what I knew from my perspective, and then a day or two later, Liddell faxed over the survey.
Donnie, you wanna go check those surveys?
I think before we vote on it, we need to see exactly where it is.
I don't know, I don't know. I'm not in the term. But I question the city's ability to give an easement over my. I'm saying what I'm saying. This is where we, me and the original builder had a distance of a fence. All I wanted him to do was agree to meet maintenance requirements on the roadway from the bridge, and he would not do it.
I remember that, yes.
So, my concern is, is somebody's gonna maintain, if they're gonna use that road, they need to maintain it.
They're gonna maintain it, yes, sir.
And that's why I agreed to have the county take it over, because if the county takes it over, then somebody's gonna do it.
And the county, we gave it to the county, and the county returned it to the county.
Because the county doesn't wanna maintain it.
Well, nobody wants to maintain it.
What was the county?
I don't wanna maintain it.
Let me, let me talk to Angela. I know Angela.
Well, do we? Who's Angela?
She's the owner.
Angela was the other property owner.
She's, she's our owner on it.
Well, I just think we need to get back to the survey and see what the survey that is in the property. Well, I just think we need to get back to the survey and see what the survey that is and the property...
But if, I know Angela real well, and she told me before, she's not interested in suing, so I don't know if it's her other partner that's interested in suing.
Well, I think, I think we need to go back to...
Right, but it's not from Angela.
We asked Sean to get a new survey.
It says it's representing her.
Representing her interest, but she didn't, I don't know if she approved it or not.
Are we gonna move away from the original thing that we had Sean do, to see about getting a new survey on the property to see about?
This is the new survey.
What I'm saying is, until...
Donnie said where...
If we don't know where it's at, how can we approve it?
The survey before was going into the lake, and so it had to be corrected. And so, Donnie would like to go and see if it has to be corrected, are we okay?
I'm good with letting him go out there and see it, but it looks, Sean...
It looks to me like Sean has done what we've asked him to do. He did do what we asked him to do.
Right, you did what you asked, we asked you to do, but until we know where it's at.
Right, and I, I understand where you're coming from, I understand your concern.
Right.
Uh, it's just, candidly, this has been, this has been an issue for almost a year now. And i- either, either A, we need, we need to decide, we're gonna, we're gonna give her the easement and let her use the road, and if you feel like you need to go look at it, that's fine. Or B, I need to communicate to her attorney that we're not gonna give her the easement.
Well, I'm not saying we're not going to, but we need to verify it first.
And, and that's fine, it's just, he, he wrote a letter about a month or so ago, and he's, he's wanting some action on it because it's, it's taking so long.
Right.
And so, I, I communicated to him, so I called him right before I came over here tonight, and I said, it's on tonight's agenda, they're gonna discuss it, and mainly I was just keeping him up to date on what was going on.
Well, no offense to you, but if we'd had known it had been surveyed and there were the flags, well, we could have inspected it before this week.
Well, just, just...
Yeah.
It was off, if we had continued...
Are we gonna have no action, or is there a motion?
I prefer no action till we verify it.
And I'd make a motion too. I don't see any reason to keep on keeping this going.
Unless, unless you give them access to...
I asked the attorney that has told me to keep them off, give my easement somewhere, because of improvements I made until they, to like it, now.
Is an easement for a long time?
If you do, you're gonna avert that lawsuit, but you're gonna be basing that on it.
Give, give us a chance until next month to try to figure this out.
Is an easement for a long time? We have no action on item number twelve, there are... Item number twelve, and we for sure need to, we for sure need to...
Oh, my goodness.
Um, Donnie, can we make sure that we get that back on next month?
Yes, 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 and get it taken care of once and for all.
Gotcha. Discussion, item number thirteen, discussion action on annexing Easy Mark North on Town Store number five eighteen.
When I was discussing with Mary our shortcomings of the city, and I have been pro-annexing for years now, but we've never seemed to have gone any far with it. We found out just a few months ago that we're providing sewer to this Easy Mark. That's one of the requirements before we can annex, is that we have to provide sewer, and we have to provide police protection. Yeah, the water, if it's in our water district, or if it's another water district, we're fine, and fire. So to me, it looks like it would be kind of clean and cut to be able to go out there, use the right of way to annex the property and to pick up Easy Mark, and I'm anticipating by, based on how much the other Easy Markers do in the sales taxes, it's probably gonna get us four, five, maybe six thousand dollars a month. So at this point, I asked Sean to research it and see how much he thought his legal fees and what it costs would be to acquire Easy Mark, to annex Easy Mark.
Are you just talking about one Easy Mark?
The other Easy Mark's already in the city limits.
Oh, okay, now, this, this one up here is in the city limits.
This one is in the city limits, this one's not.
And that's the one you're talking about? How about Holland's Lumber and all up in there, Valero and all of that?
No, I'm not talking about that right now.
Is that something that would be considered?
Possibly in the future, but that's more expense.
So, Rhonda, what would you like to do at this point? Would you like the council's permission for you to pursue some...
I'd like to hear what Sean found out for me.
Oh, so you already asked Sean to...
I've already asked Sean to look into it.
And you already listed a bill on that.
Okay.
Sean, can we have a report on that?
Yeah, um, I, a lot of the work is gonna be, are you wanting Liddell to do it, or are you wanting me to do it? Because that, that's, that's gonna come into play, because what's gonna have to happen is, we're gonna have to pass an ordinance saying that we want to, um, to annex part of the property. I can draft that or Liddell can draft it, but basically, what we're gonna have to do is, wherever the city limit line ends, we've gotta go from there all the way to where you wanna go. We can't just say, okay, we're gonna take the Easy Mark in, in the area around it, we've gotta go from the city limits line all the way out there, okay? Then, we've got to obtain written consent from the owners in a majority of acres that were, were annexing, and I have no idea how many owners we're talking about. And again, this is, do you wanna send Sean over to LaFlore County and Latimer County, because I think where that Easy Mark is, is in, is in Latimer County. But I think where you're gonna have to go is to go from here, is, is gonna include LaFlore County. So, gotta go over there and figure out who owns what property where in LaFlore County, gotta then do it in Latimer County, and at that point, might be able to do it over the phone, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that or not. We gotta get records so that we can send, uh, send it to them. Then, we've got to provide the notes, and again, you want me to draft it, or you want Liddell to draft it? Uh, we've gotta have, uh, it posted in the newspaper, and then we have to mail it, certified mail, to all the owners. Then we've gotta conduct a hearing. At that point, you probably want me involved in, in the process. We have to have a majority of those people at the public hearing that are in favor of doing it, if they're not, then we're probably gonna have to file suit. Uh, in order to, to move forward, to get it. If everybody's okay with being annexed into town, it won't cost that much, but the moment we have to file suit, it's gonna cost you three hundred dollars just to file a lawsuit to begin with, and then a hundred dollars an hour, uh, going over to, um, to different counties, because it's LaFlore County for part of it, and Latimer County for the other part of it. And if we, and here's what I always call the hammer, and there's a bunch of other stuff involved, but basically, if the lawsuit gets involved on this, the prevailing property owners in the annex dispute are entitled to court costs and reasonable attorney fees. So if you have some property owners that wanna fight you on this, and you end up losing, you're paying me, and you're paying the other attorney, and you're paying court costs. So, at a minimum, I think you need to first figure out who all the property owners are out there, and get a barometer on where they're at with the process. Because if, if they're all in favor of it, okay, well, would we move forward, we'll have the hearing, we'll send out all the notices, we'll do all, do all the plans that we need to do. Uh, and there's actually a requirement that the plan is done, okay? Just, just because we're providing the sewer and the water, we still have to have a plan in place that has to be approved by the board, and has to be approved by the, the, the property owners, saying we're okay with, with the plan. It's still, we still, even though it's there, we still have to do the, uh, do the stuff. Anyway, long story short, um, estimating ballpark, I would say we're at five thousand dollars if it's easy, and probably thirty thousand dollars if it's hard.
Mary, you have, I'm sorry, Mary, you've had some annexing experience.
Yes, I just wanted to speak, uh, from my viewpoint, and just sort of go along with what Sean's saying, because I do have quite a bit of experience with annexations. And I love the idea that he has almost taken a straw hole, obviously, you have to identify the property owners and find out where they stand before it makes sense to decide if you want to commit yourself to that kind of money. But in my experience, the success or failure rate hinges on the local property owners seeing a local face, coming hat in hand, showing these are the benefits, and here's what it's going to cost you, and here's what it'll do for our town. Um, nothing against Sean or anybody like that, but in my experience, when I've sent an out-of-town professional to either make a call or to show up, uh, local property owners, especially in our type of culture, they don't take well to that, they wanna see one of their own come to them and make a case for it.
I, I would agree with that, you sent, you sent me to the, to somebody's door, and it's already antagonistic because I'm a lawyer.
Right.
But I think the council needs to be in support of whoever's gonna go do that, I don't think it just needs to be, because I know that's happened before, that just randomly council members have talked to business owners, and it like freaked them out, and...
Right.
I don't know, I think that I wouldn't ask anybody to do it without the council's blessing. Rhonda, did you have something?
Can, can you just, can you annex just the road, and then out, then once you get out there, annex just the Easy Mark?
I don't think so, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Well, the reason I said this is, I mean, at one time, we were talking about trying to annex south, and we had somebody that didn't wanna get involved, and we did some checking on that, and we were told that you can annex just the road.
We're talking to them.
Well, I don't wanna get into that, okay.
There's also here...
But, you know, you can, and it, and it kind of goes through to the state...
Right.
To take in that strip of the highway to the business you want.
That can also be good in certain cases to be to the easements, that you can catch work yourself to it by way of easements, but it depends on very specific laws.
I mean, the mechanics of going about doing it, if the town adopts apartments and says they wanna just go down the state highway and then get that in there, I'd almost guarantee that the, the Easy Mark owner is probably gonna be like, not only no, but heck no, I'm not gonna let you, you do this, and he's probably gonna fight you on it. Uh, and, and that looks, that looks, from my perspective, if I'm the judge looking at that, and you're annexing just the road, and then all of a sudden you get to Easy Mark, you go out and grab him, and that's...
It matches, sounds good.
Your property, somebody.
I'd probably, I'd probably not gonna side with, with you on that.
Uh, now, I mean, if you go down the road and, and get, you know, go one lot over this way and one lot over that way, where, where it looks like it's not just, you're just running out there to get that property within the town, maybe that works a little bit better. The mechanics of, of how to do it, there's, there's no case law that says you gotta do this, you gotta do that, I mean, there's...
We're in a good position, we got water and sewer coming from that way.
Well, one other thing I'm thinking of, is if we annex and extend our city limits out there, the ordinance says you cannot collect a penny of sales tax until you provide them with all the other amenities the city has. So I know what just preliminary talking with Keith is, to get Fitzgerald fee, where we can collect sales tax on them, we have to bore under the highway, which is twenty thousand dollars. So it could be that we're annexing all these, but we're not gonna impose the sales tax on Fitzgeralds immediately, or it could be...
We could just give this, uh, law enforcement cover.
Law enforcement coverage, right.
Tell me if I'm wrong, but I, I was under the impression that they used to give you about a year to get all that stuff to...
Three, three months.
But now you have to, don't you have to get it to them right away?
If, if, if you make the decision to do it, and you send out the, the notices, there is a requirement that the public hearing be done no earlier than fourteen days, no more than thirty days following the publication and the mailing of the notice. So once, once you make the decision you're gonna do it, it has to happen quickly, you can't drag your feet, you can't put it off. Once, once you say, we're gonna do it, and you, and you, and you put it in the paper, and say, we're annexing this part, and you send out the notice to the property owners, at that point, you're, you're, you're committed, and you need to have the hearing, but then, obviously, within thirty days.
But if we can get three fourths of these property owners to say, yes, I wanna be in there, it's a much easier...
Oh, much, much easier, yes.
But if we vote on this tonight, what you're saying is within thirty days?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
What, what, what I'm proposing that you do, what, what I was asked to do, was I was asked to look at, at the annexation statutes again, determine what the mechanics were, and what I thought, reasonably speaking, it was gonna cost from the legal side. Because you don't wanna incur a ton of legal fees that you're, you're not gonna be able to recoup in, in sales tax for several, several months, several years. So I was asked, look, look at this and, and see how much I think it's gonna cost, and again, a lot of this comes down to, if you're asking me to do the task, remember, I gotta bill the rent. If you're asking Liddell or asking, uh, Mary to do it, then, you know, you've got, that, that's, that's an easier cost to deal with. Then some of the tasks are things that they probably have more time to do, and it's easier for them to, them to do, uh, you know.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you suggest right now, we just do some more preliminaries before we go any further?
What, what I think I would do is, I, I'd find out, I'd find out who the property owners are in the area you wanna annex, and I'd designate one person on the council, maybe two people on the council, just go talk to them. And say, hey, we're thinking about doing this, would you be opposed to it? And if they say, eh, you know, I would be, well, you know, if you get enough of them that are opposed to it, it's probably not even worth the effort, because it's gonna cost...
And you could just do one side of the road, correct?
You could.
Well, you have to do the utility that's serving them, do you not?
Yeah, you have to have...
In other words, if the sewers all they're using right now, you'd have to annex the sewer all the way out, would you not?
We have to...
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, the reason we're saying that we should be able to annex them is because they're being served with the sewer system right now, city sewer.
No, what she's saying, what, what, what Rhonda was saying is, is that there's, there's basically easiest way to look at it, there's four requirements that you have to have in the plan. You have to be able to provide them with sewer, you have to be able to provide them with water, you have to be able to provide them with fire protection, you have to be able to provide them with police protection. You put that in the plan, and you say, this is what we're gonna do. What Rhonda's saying is, is that the sewer issue is already settled because the sewer line's already run out there. So we don't have to worry about how are we gonna run, and, and that cost has already been defrayed.
That's our just cost, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's already there, so, so we can go as far out as we want to, with, with the reason...
Well, plus, we also get into a situation where we have to fight with the water district that's serving them water now.
No, no, if they are in another water district, we do not have to take that water district away.
And that's also one of the things what you...
We have a right to say, if they are in the Buffalo Valley Water District, we are...
So we don't have to serve them water?
No.
You don't have to, as long as you address that in the plan, as long as they know that, that that's part of the plan in the annexation process, as long as they're aware of that, they're okay with it, then, then that's fine.
So then, my understanding is already serving all those, you don't need a permission?
No, you still have to get the permission.
Yeah, we have to get officially annexed.
Well, why don't we do some research at some other time, and why don't we decide who on the council's gonna talk to the property owners, or make a motion or something, so we can move on with that? It is definitely something that if, you know, we need to be in support of that if some council members go out and...
Do we have support of all the council members to pursue that?
We have my support.
Yes, yes.
I'm in... Friends of Shannon's.
I have one thing to ask, do our police, are you out there?
Only in, in an emergency.
And they can only maintain it until the county gets there.
And why Rodney is, is supporting this is because that will allow them longer amount of street that they can patrol for more speeding tickets.
Oh, I'm surprised.
I was just gonna ask a question about that very thing, like, I, I've noticed that the highway patrol has been in town issuing speeding tickets, isn't that a missed opportunity for us to generate revenue from those tickets, or is it a different, uh, issue?
I don't think patrol go anywhere to say, oh, well...
Well, I understand that, but why are we not doing it?
Well, we do, we are, they're doing it.
Probably get the revenue that they're...
When they wanna come into town...
Then that's a whole new discussion, let's have that on a different time, okay?
Okay.
So we have a motion for Gina to pursue the annexation.
And you wanna put it, you and I would share it with...
And we have a motion to pursue it, and Gina and Rhonda will be the spokesperson, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, any more discussion? And Liddell and Mary will kinda help out with that, any question for now?
We will budget Sean's causes all that we can.
Any more discussion?
Well, we're not, we're not, wait a minute now.
Any more discussion?
That's, that's on the boat.
We're, we're not even starting that process yet, we're, we're just gathering information right now.
Any more discussion?
We understand that.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Okay, item number fourteen, approver jax, suspending city council monthly payment, is that Father Andrew?
Father notice.
Father notice, check that father's out. I know, I know, it's, it's twenty bucks, it's a hundred dollars a month, but the way I look at this is, we are so in the red, and we may, may get to the point where we have to ask some of our employees to take cuts, or some of our departments to take cuts, may. I just think it all starts with us, that we ought to say, we're gonna be the first ones to take the first cut.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm, I like my twenty bucks.
Well, just, just for the record, I don't get any money anyway.
I don't either. Most time I don't make the money to somebody.
But I get mine, so...
I used to, I maybe for a long time I keep mine.
So I just think it's a nice way to tell our employees, say, hey, we're willing to take cuts too.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we suspend pay to the council.
And I'll second it.
My motion is second. Any more discussion?
Both.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
I, no.
Jackie?
No.
Can I take it?
Not stupid.
I think that's a proper crap.
All mine are lying, all mine are lying.
If it's not a majority, I don't take it all.
Item number fifteen, approver jax, executive session under Title twenty-one. Section three oh seventy-one, discussing employment, employment promotion, devotion, disciplining, or resignation, opening official salary, public officer. Employee animal control, clerk treasurer salary, hiring lifeguards, manager, assistant manager for swimming pool. Contract, clerk Mary Timmons, violation of Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, salary structure of employees. All of that on one?
Yeah.
It's something new, okay. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any more discussion?
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Jackie?
Yes.
So there were... Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Out of number 17, action pending from executive session.
On animal control, I make the motion to hire Joshua Alexander at $500 a month for a part-time position.
Second. And a motion is second. Any more discussion?
Both. Donnie?
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Any motion on the floor?
I make a motion to set the clerk treasurer's hours to be 25 hours a week at $8 an hour plus the $250 pay for treasurer's. No, is that not right?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's included. It was 1,050. Right. She said a thousand fifty. You're right.
A thousand fifty, yes. So a total of, for a total of a thousand fifty.
For six months.
For six months.
And then you reevaluate.
For a training period, then we reevaluate, like, to see if that position's going to be about an hour.
We have a motion. Second. And a second. Any more discussion?
Both. Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
I make a motion that we hire... Just them manager, assistant manager. Okay. Shannon Coleman for manager, Sherry Ward assistant manager for the pool at 11 an hour.
Okay. We have a motion. Second. Any more discussion?
Both. Donnie?
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Caleb Stowe, Bryon Humphries, at 8:50.
Okay. We have a motion?
And that we will not reimburse their...
Yes. We have a motion. A second motion. Any more discussion?
Both. Donnie?
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Do you have swimming pools, so you need to pay pool parties $60?
Make a motion that we raise the swimming pool private parties to $60 for two-hour period.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion?
Both. Donnie?
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
I make a motion that we raise the admission fee to the pool to $3.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion?
Both. Donnie?
No.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
About contract clerk Mary Timmons? This is yours?
Hmm?
This is yours?
I've got that on there, so I'll make a motion that, well, that Mary Timmons does what she was contracted to do and nothing else, as far as her job description.
Who's going to get that contract?
She'd already had it.
So you're going to, you're going to, okay, contract, okay. So you're going to get a contract together for the board to look at?
We need to do.
You're going to make a motion? Okay, we have a motion.
We don't have a contract.
We're going to get, I make the motion to do a contract then.
To do a contract.
To do a contract, defining her duties strictly at accounting duties.
Do we have a motion?
To do a contract.
To define Mary's...
Donnie is willing to fix up a contract that the council will approve, and she will only do the duties on the contract. We have a motion.
I'll second it.
This second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
No.
Jackie?
Yes.
Violation of Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, Donnie.
We're going to table that and discuss it in our budget meeting.
But you had no action on that?
Not on the...
Can't talk about violation of Oklahoma Open Meeting Act at the budget meeting.
No, I mean, when we set the budget meeting in the future, not tonight.
So you have no action on this?
No action right now.
Okay. No action. Salary structure of employees? No action.
No action till the budget.
Okay. We have no action on any of those, okay. Out of number 18, discussion action on spending, hiring, salary freeze.
I've got that on there, and the reason I do is because whether anybody realizes it or not, we're going in $20,000 a month.
Oh, really?
A month. And so I find it hard to continue to hire people when we can't pay everything we're doing now, and that's why I've got that on there. I know you guys, I think you're worth more than what you're getting, but I'd rather us find a way to stop this bleeding now than to get to a point where we're going to have to say, "We can't pay anybody."
Mary, can you come here a minute? Sorry.
So that's why I've got this in here, to try to stop the bleeding, because if we don't now, it'll be too late later. And I don't want to do any layoffs, I don't want to do anything like that, but we've got to figure out a way to trim how much we're spending. Our payroll last year was over $600 and something thousand dollars, plus another $80,000 in insurance payments on health insurance, plus unemployment, plus FICA. So we're spending more than we're bringing in, and how do we stop that? So...
What I'm going to say is that as long as I'm here, I'm going to do everything in my power to see to it that you're not cutting any way, because I do not believe that the employees of this community is where we need to cut anything. And that's only my personal opinion, just like Donnie's is that we have to cut, and we do have to cut, just like we came out from that swimming pool, and we cut everything we possibly can.
Which...
We know that you are the people that work 24/7. We don't. We know you're the people that hold this town together. We don't. We know you work 24/7. We don't, and we appreciate you for that. And I just want you to know that I'm not entertaining that thought. I'm entertaining a lot of thoughts, but I don't have a, I mean, I'm not talking about anything like that. My question for Mary, if you don't mind, is when you first came here, were we not in a hole a lot more than we are now?
Yes.
Can you tell me, you might not get to answer this question, and I didn't ask you before, and I'm sorry to cut you on the spot, and yes, right now, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have about $14,000 a month that we have more bills at the end of the month than we can pay for, is that correct? About 14...
It's in the 15 to 20 range if you count payroll taxes.
15 to 20. When you first came here, can you give me an idea of what we were in the hole when you first came?
Oh, mercy. I mean, it was well over $100,000 more than we are now, and I managed to renegotiate some things with the USDA, we've improved collection procedures, and just basically cleaned a lot of things up, and...
So we're, in your opinion, going from $120,000 in the hole a month to 50,000 or to 20,000?
I can't say it was a month, but I'm just saying, when I was first here, we were delinquent with literally all of our vendors except for the utilities that were set up on automatic drive. The way it is now, we are current with all of our vendors except for with our payroll tax agencies. Now, I know that the council mentioned earlier that we're legally bound to pay those, and of course we are, and I don't just not pay those because I don't want to. But the point is, as an accountant, when I have more bills than I have money, who can I hold it back? The electric company's not going to wait, our water treatment chemical company's not going to wait, the people who pick up our garbage aren't going to wait. And so unfortunately, I've been making those tough decisions because that's what I've been tasked with doing. One of the things that's particularly challenging for us right now is that in addition to playing a massive game of catch-up, in addition to the fact that we still are spending or need to spend more than we make, we also have additional expenditures that we weren't dealing with last year, and those are associated with the water treatment plant project. Everyone's getting the benefit of the improved drinking water, however, we have not done anything as a town or as a utility to basically come up with the revenues to pay for that project. And what's very interesting and telling to me is if you look at the amount that that project costs us per month, and well, for many, many years, it's right in that 15 to $20,000 mark, so you can start to see a connection between the two.
Thank you. And you know, you've been told before, and I'll tell you again, even this time will pass. Even this time will pass, but in my opinion, we are, we don't need to have you guys scared to death. We are so much better off than we were a year ago, because we know where we're at. We have lots of things to shave and lots of things to cut.
Well, that's what I'm asking, where are we going to shave?
Well...
And we haven't decided that. And to let you all know, she's done all these cuts and everything, and we're still bleeding 20, 15 to 20,000 a month.
Right.
There's not that much more to cut.
No, there's not, and that's why I would propose, and I've got some ideas I'd like to share with you guys in the appropriate setting about how we can generate revenues, because there's not a lot of fat to trim. And I do have a couple of ideas on that that I would love to share with you all, like I said at the red flag.
Well, hopefully, we're going to have a gen item down here to establish a meeting to talk about this.
Okay, great.
And try to find out how we can get this budget under control.
Good, I would love to share that.
Because if we don't, sooner or later, we're going to get to that point of no return.
That's right.
And I don't want us to get there.
PJ, what did you have?
Well, I heard her say that we haven't done anything to increase revenue, but didn't they just, didn't they just raise the rates on the utilities?
That was to actually bring the rates up in line with the cost. What happens is in many, the vast majority...
But you did raise, they did raise the rates.
Yes. They raised the rates so that they can even get the money for the project, and the reason why is because the rates have not been raised in so long that they were actually selling the money for less than it cost them to make it. So in order to get that money, they had to raise the rates. You are absolutely correct, they raised the rates.
We did that in order to pay back our loan that we were...
I understand that, but she said they did.
The swimming pool water board came out.
Francis, they want us to do it every year.
And my other question is, when are we going to get a budget?
We're going to try to have a budget within 30 days. We have, we have a budget, we just have not okayed that budget. We have a budget now, but it's not...
That nobody's seen.
But there, I, I have a problem. Anyway, Francis, you had a question?
I'm just wondering if Francis, your name is the one she thought. I know how, how she works. She has to have an objection date when she thinks that gap's going to close.
I don't have a date, because right now, we're not even keeping up with our monthly expenses, therefore, I cannot close the gap on the past expenses. We're actually widening, widening the gap every month, we're not closing the gap.
Okay. Then, I mean, I'm all about progress and getting things done, and I think as a group, we should come up with some ideas to make enough money to maybe pay the taxes.
I think with our annexing, if that actually works out for us, it's going to help us a lot.
And I think sometimes...
If that works.
I mean, a suggestion that I have, I've dealt with all things for a long, many number of years. I'm not saying new things are always better, but I just wonder if we could have a city auction and have people, maybe the city donate what they don't need, what they might need to replace.
We've been talking about them.
In town. I know I've got some stuff I could seriously donate.
All those little things would probably make a difference, that'd be something that we could...
And try to come together in unison, and, I mean, I don't know of anybody else that would sit here for $20 a month and...
Well, they just took that.
Well, I'm concerned about that too, because that leaves the city, I think, in a legal liability. I may be wrong. As attorney...
Think you have to change your ordinance in order to take it away?
Yeah, and I would, I would rather pay you $20 a month than make it mandatory.
I would rather donate it if it kept this town from sinking. I appreciate that thought, but I don't think that's...
But anyway, I mean, if there's issues, and I, I mean, I'm sitting here wondering how many people are banking on the income tax return is going to be held up till we pay that.
Till we pay what?
Till we pay their taxes, yeah.
Oh, there won't be, that doesn't, that won't be affected by that.
Okay.
That will not be affected by that.
Okay.
And you also need to know whether it be poor management of the board or poor management by people we had in these positions, the board that you had did not just sit here and do this intentionally.
Oh, I know that.
There's been a lot of lessons learned from it, and a lot of trust has gone now because of it, but we're healing, we're getting better. We're getting better, and we learn from our mistakes, and we move forward, so. Does anybody else, Francis? LaHoney, you had something?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of touch on the point of where we have opportunities Uh, yeah, I was just gonna kind of touch on the point of where we have opportunities to generate more revenue. And that's why I asked the question about the highway patrol writing tickets where our officers might be missing the opportunity to draw revenue.
Right, and I think Gina's talked to her department about that, and I think it has increased.
Okay. And, and you know, I'd like for our new dog catcher to meet with the Animal Control Advisory Committee, if you're still recognizing this, are you? Then to talk about ways where we can generate some revenue in that regard.
I think that you and Gina could visit about that, I think that would...
Well, Gina hasn't been to our meeting, so I'm hoping that maybe this is something...
She knows a conflict.
Yeah.
A conflict, but we can see what we can do.
I tell ya, once we get him hired, you come and see Liddell about it, and we'll see if we can... And we'll see if we can't introduce you to him, okay?
Okay, because we, we need somebody that's reliable to contact.
Now, when you say we recognize you, we do recognize you, but you do know that it's not affiliated with the town of Tallahena or the board, right? When you say that we recognize you...
Well, it is, and it is. And I mean, to what degree are you, are you asking us just to twiddle our thumbs and...
No, we're asking, we're asking you as an organization to come to us and bring suggestions that we may do to make this town a better place.
And we're still formulating also on...
Yes, we are still working together with that, yes.
Yeah. And so, yes, they're all...
But you probably won't have a, you know, you may not have somebody from the board at every meeting, but that doesn't mean we're not interested in hearing what you guys have to say.
Well, we, we have interested people, I think, and they just, you know, wherever your interests are, it's what you'll do. You know, if you don't do the things you're not interested in, we'll do the things you want.
But the quicker you guys move with ideals, the better we'll be.
Well, we, we have some very definitive things we're, we're working on, so we'll have those in our...
I'd just like to say to all our employees, thank you for coming tonight.
Out of number eighteen, Donnie, you wanna make a motion?
Yes, and, and let me explain to you what I'm thinking here on this number eighteen on the hiring freeze. To me, it doesn't make sense for us to hire somebody new and then tell you we ain't got any money. I'd rather not cut anybody. I think, I hope that you would rather remain where you're at and, and, and not lose anything. So that's why I'm proposing this spending hiring salary freeze until we can get this under control.
I didn't know we were going out for applications on any department.
Well, I'm saying we shouldn't until we get our budget under control. That's, that's what my motion is, is that we freeze any hiring, spending, salary freeze until we figure this budget out.
Donnie, how do we freeze spending?
Well, when I say freezing, we don't, I'm, I'm sorry, guys, but we, we would cut out your yearly, what is it called, the longevity pay.
I think when you get your budget, you can talk about that.
Uh, well, if that's in general, it's, it's all right, is it not? If I don't specifically say an employee.
But I'm just suggesting that you do that during your budget meeting.
Well, we, we have to figure this out, so...
But your motion is you wanna make a motion that you...
That we don't hire anybody, and we freeze salaries at what they are until we figure this out.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
It's too gentle, Donnie, I can't vote for it.
I for lack of a motion.
We might regroup on how you got it on there. Out of number nineteen, discussion action on asking state auditors for assistance.
I had contacted the auditor's office to ask if they could come down and give us some assistance. And they were willing to do that at no charge to the city of Tallahena. It's not an audit, it's not trying to get anybody in trouble. It's them coming down and showing us procedures and ways we need to be doing things to make sure we comply with the laws. And so...
I think we've already paid an auditor to do that. I think you just need to call that auditor and ask him to do his job. Because he's already been paid for another year's audit.
Here, here we go again, I'll let you kill it for lack of a second. But I think it's good that we bring them in in case we do get audited, they know we're working with them.
We have a motion on the floor to call in the state auditor for assistance.
How would, how would this not be helpful, do you think?
If it's not gonna cost us anything, why wouldn't we want that? Does somebody scare you?
Sounds like we've gotten into some really bad problems.
Now, we, we've been audited by the state before, and...
This is not an audit, he's not talking about a audit.
No, but we, we've dealt with the state auditors before, and I don't think there's not anything that's...
We have a list of things to go by.
We actually have an auditor. Yeah.
It's gonna be taking up Mary's time to do this. You're already wanting to cut back.
We have a motion when you're in session, pretty quick.
What did you say, Shaw?
You gotta, you need a second to continue discussion.
Fail due to lack of a second. Donnie, you might regroup on that, too. Talk to the board member about it. Out of number twenty-one, discussion action on meeting to establish budget and go for 2014. What date you want that on?
Whatever y'all can all meet on.
What day are you gonna have that budget ready to talk about?
Mary, are we ready?
I don't think Mary's been working on that one.
We had a meeting scheduled to do the budget, and it was canceled. How much work did you have done on that? How much more time do you need?
I had zero work done on that, cut out fires every day, so...
But you do have people that worked on their budgets that you do have.
Oh, yeah, Jackie has worked, absolutely. And then I still have the notes that, or what Trudy had worked up, because I crunched a lot of numbers when she was here to give her some historical data to use. So absolutely, we're not starting from scratch. And you guys just tell me when, and I'll have it ready. But please keep in mind that I have an absolutely huge, non-negotiable deadline this month with state unemployment.
What date is that?
It's at month end.
Today's the tenth, so we don't have a whole lot of time before our next...
Well, if you want me to continue signing checks, you need to get your budget approved. Or you're just gonna be signing your checks yourself.
Can we do it on the...
We can, we can start, we can start, we can start it. We don't have to complete it in this next meeting. But we need to start.
I think we do need to complete budget, I have...
Well, what I'm saying is, we, my point is, we can meet more than once between now and next meeting.
I can meet once.
Well, it only takes three, isn't that right, Shaw?
But it only takes three, you're right. You're right. But you should be able to do all of that in one meeting. It may take you all night, but you should be able to get it in one.
Has all the departments given?
I don't know if they've been asked for one or not.
No, they have.
Would Monday, the twenty-fourth, give you a little bit of time to...
Yeah, I'd be happy to accommodate Monday, the twenty-fourth.
Do you have to pay any bills between now and then?
I do, absolutely. On purchase orders that y'all approved earlier, and then we'll have some more in public works. So on expenditures that have already been incurred on behalf of the town.
Is that going to be during the day or during the evening?
Whatever y'all prefer.
Y'all tell me, I'm writing.
It'll have to be evening, is it on Monday?
You wanna do five-thirty that Monday?
Yes.
That'd be all right?
Five-thirty on the twenty-fourth.
So I make a motion that we establish March the twenty-fourth at five-thirty for a budget meeting?
Second.
Second, any more discussion?
Is this gonna be like an executive session?
No.
No. It's a special, special...
Special meeting with one agenda.
So far.
So far.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes, if there's anything you want on that budget, I suggest you see Mary right away. So she can get that on there. If there's something you want on there or don't want on there.
Please clarify for me, or, this is gonna sound really ignorant, but I'm just gonna go for it. Are we working on the current fiscal year's budget or the next fiscal year's?
Current.
Thank you. Okay.
Out of number twenty-two, discussion action on sharing of information among board members.
I've got that on there because when I go to the mailbox, I see mail in everybody's box. Everybody's got different mail. And theoretically, all of us council members are equal. And so for me, it's important that we all know what's going on. For instance, I saw an envelope in your mailbox that said Department of Transportation. Well, I have no idea what we're getting from the Department of Transportation. And as a council member, I think it's important that we're all informed on everything that comes into the city.
If I got a letter from the Department of Transportation, I don't know what it was.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's important that we share that information.
I don't know why you're looking in other people's mailbox.
Sometimes if I open that, Donnie, if I...
You can call it what you want to, Liddell.
Donnie, the Department of Transportation has to tell someone what's going on.
Right.
And if it got put in my box, it was only because someone chose to put it in my box, or maybe it had my name on it.
And I don't care whose box it's in, but it needs to be shared.
Whatever that pertains to, I give it to either Mary or Liddell. I normally never leave the city hall with it.
And my point is, I think it's important that we all know what that is.
From Department of Public Transportation, sometimes I...
It's probably garbage.
I do have...
No, 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 it was garbage. It was trash off day, I put it in trash boxes.
Because I've been over...
I've never had trash off days in New York.
But I'll be glad to give that, there's like several copies in there, there's still in there, so it wasn't important that's made.
And that's fine, too. And I'm not talking about that, but I'm saying it's important that we share information amongst ourselves.
Well, I, I forwarded that on to Rhonda because she's in charge of that.
Well, I'm doing the trash off.
They do have to put in somebody's box, but, okay, anything else? Out of number twenty-three. Out of number twenty-three, new business. Out of number twenty-four?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any more discussion?
Donna?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Meeting board for the Tallahena Public Works Authority, so if you have a talent, you can go ahead and go ahead.
I just thought supper made.
Supper made. He's like, he never...
I know it. Don't let me bring pizza on the counter. Absolutely, and I was...
On who?
I saved my last chip. We could do it after.
I don't remember too.
I'm gonna bring back on the...
Anyone here from... I don't remember three, I don't remember four.
I don't have any paper.
Out of number four, financial report, Mary?
I feel alright.
I get my back.
LaHona, you and Jackie are gonna have to step outside if you don't...
Well, we were done, took care of it.
Well, I just helped you along there, you don't have mom's news.
Thank you.
Financial report.
The following information is from the Tallahena Public Works Authority Revenue Fund for the month of February 2014. Total operating revenues of ninety-five thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars, thirty-one cents. Next page, total operating expenses of eighty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. For a net operating income of ten thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars, seventy-three cents. You'll see some additional line items below, including interest income. But an item that's a little bit new to you, the next to last item, which is called transfers out. What that amount represents is the amount of money that we're required to transfer through restricted reserve accounts based on the, in this case, the water treatment plant project, which I discussed earlier. Some of those represent debt service or sinking transfers, and some represent depreciation reserve or asset replacement reserves. That, that amount is certainly more than we have to do monthly. That just represents my getting some accounts where even now into the place where the USDA would like to see them.
And this money that you're sending aside here is not going to be a payment of a loan.
No, that is actually listed on the first page, Rhonda, by capital outlay, twelve thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. You see that every month, it's, it's automatically drafted. But I did email you today the total amount that's basically consumed by reserves and loan drafts on that particular project per month.
I haven't had a chance to look at emails today.
Okay.
So anybody have any questions for Mary?
This is the one time...
No, actually, you're gonna see that every month, but that's not the, that's a much longer, larger amount than you'll typically see. I was having to do some catch-ups there. So if you take this amount of twelve, seven, forty, and then you also take the total that I emailed you today, the difference, which is gonna be about forty-five hundred, is what you're gonna see there.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you, Mary. Out of number five, approver Jake considering, consistent of the minutes for meeting held in...
I make a motion to approve.
A motion?
Second.
In a second, any more discussion?
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Out of number six, approver Jake, public works purchase holders.
I make a motion to...
A motion?
Second.
In a second, any more discussion?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes. Out of number seven, approver Jake paying invoice TAL-070329 to Melburger-Brawley in the amount of loan balance eight hundred and eighteen dollars and one cent for water treatment plant distribution and maintenance.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion? I second that motion, any more discussion? But...
Donnie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes. Out of number eight, discussion action concerning employee leave request requirement verified. Approve supervisor leave. I think Rhonda got that verified already. Out of number nine, discussion action on spending, hiring, and salary freeze. Do we have a motion?
Well, since I know how it'll go, I might as well say no action.
No action on out of number nine. Out of number ten, discussion action on meeting to establish budget and go for 2014. That would be on...
Motion is...
We have another motion, ready?
Mm-hmm.
A motion, second, Gina, any more discussion?
Donnie?
Uh, yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Out of number eleven, approver Jake, unit executive session under Title 21, Section 307B1, discussing employment, appointment, promotion, division, disciplining, and resignation of individual salary public officer, employee contract clerk, Mary Timmons, violation of Oklahoma Open Media Act salary structure of employees. Donnie, do you wanna go there again?
I don't think we need to.
We have no action on out of number eleven. Out of number twelve, approver Jake, exiting from executive session as Monday, December 13. Out of fourteen, discussion action on acquiring a truck for maintenance.
I've got that on there, I've got a deal where I can get us a free pickup. If, if we get on a list to get a free pickup, let's put it that way. Yep. And I talked with the, it's BP, and we will pretend. And there, all we have to do is write them a letter.
Already did that.
Uh, so you didn't act like you knew it.
So we've already sent a letter, and we don't have an answer yet?
When did you send? I sent one, I sent one last January, and I sent one this February.
Okay. I told her where I was from, and she didn't recognize it, so...
So you want Liddell to maybe send a copy of the letter? Or send a new one?
No, she's already sent it, no sense sending a copy.
So she can find out if that answer was yesterday?
Well, they put it on the list.
You're just on the list. Yeah, you don't know how far, how close, or...
So you just wanna check it out and see?
There's no sense checking it out, either.
So nothing on out of fourteen? Out of number fifteen, discussion action on monthly meeting with Melburger-Brawley Engineering Contractors.
I've got that on there.